We will go back into open session. We just completed an executive session for the purpose of collective bargaining. We will actually discuss that later when we discuss the superintendent's mid-year, what do you call it, mid-year status report on his evaluation. Because it was for collective bargaining with the superintendent. It's kind of hard to collective bargain with one person, but we are actually able to do that, which is fascinating. He's his own unit, he's his bargaining unit of one. So anyway, before we, Sean, do we have any paraphernalia tonight? Or is to hand out to the departing members, or will that be done at all?
We do.
We do.
Depends on when you would like to do that, sir. We do have paraphernalia.
I'd like to, could we do that right away? Is that okay with you?
I think that would be appropriate.
Because I know Sean wants to get out. So, tonight.
That's what I said.
For those, for those watching, for those watching live and in color, we have two members who will be, who will be leaving us tonight for the final time. And Julie Kopke, who will be finishing out her three-year term. And Jerry Venezia, who will be finishing his eighteen and a half years approximately, maybe a little more, as a North Reading School Committee member. Since I'm the chairman, I'm going to speak first on these two. I just want to say Julie brought a great sense of passion to the school committee. She very quickly became an effective member of this committee, even though I think some of us thought she might be a little bit of a pain when she started. But she turned out to be a great member. Her, her education and teaching experience have been, I think, a really great addition to the committee. And I really can't believe her family won't let her run again. But that's life in the, in the big leagues. But I think Julie, you've been a great, a great and contributing member, and you do a great job of reading those donations. I don't know who's going to do that next year. But we're sad to see you go. And we have a little gift for you here.
Thank you.
Which you can openly, look, it says the master teacher.
Oh, wow.
All right.
Cool.
And then I'll move on to Jerry. That's it. Now, no, no. Jerry Venezia, what can you say? Eighteen and a half years on the school committee. Basically involved with every building project and building, new building project and renovation project that we have undergone in the last fifteen years. Jerry was a one-man, one-man band, basically. We had a committee on the bachelor, but I think Jerry was there every day because, one, we selected a non-union contractor, and it was a non-union job. And every day there were pickets there, basically, from the union. And I know Jerry, Jerry was there every day checking that out. Jerry was there when the water pipe burst and the electricity went down. And then there was the high school project where I will forever remember our Saturday morning strolls through the uncompleted high school project, violating every rule that I'm sure the contractor had in place. We did have our hard hats on. But walking through there without anybody guiding us, protecting us, we just went wherever we wanted. And it was great. It was great. And we, twelve years later, the project still isn't completed. But it was fun. In addition to the eighteen and a half years on the school committee, Mr. Venezia served on the secondary school building committee. Were you on the bachelor? Did we have a ba, what do we call it? The elementary?
Bachelor, elementary school building.
Elementary school building committee. He was a selectman for three years, which I think is what happened to him. Then he came here for eighteen and a half. He coached all sorts of youth sports, got thrown out of many a game he coached, I assume. Mr. Venezia, is that correct?
Several.
Several. And, and he's just-
Statute of limitations is run on that.
I think Jerry and Julie represent the backbone of a community. A community is built on its volunteers. And whether it's three years or eighteen and a half years, if you don't have those volunteers, the community can't strengthen over the years. You need those volunteers. I'm going to miss both of them. I'm going to miss Jerry telling us the story every three or four months about how he had a 4.0 his first year in college, 2.0 the first semester, 2.0 the second semester, how UMass was the best six years of his life to get his bachelor's degree, and, and many others. He's been a great contributor to this town, and I think he deserves a round of applause for his service to the community.
Well, thank you.
And I'll give you this, but before you or Julie speak, I would like to give the rest of the members a chance to say something hopefully nice about you and Julie. And then we'll give anybody in the audience a chance to say something about you. So I'll go to, I'll go to Julie first, since you only have to talk about Jerry. You don't have to talk, well, you can talk about yourself, too, so.
Why?
Because I like her.
Well, why do you want to be the one who's watching?
Well, no, because-
Because I'm going to say-
Because, yeah. Well, I just want to go to Julie first, because she can say something about Jerry, and then they can say something about-
No, me, they can.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mrs. Kopke.
So Jerry, I appreciate the time and energy, and I agree, I understand that commitment. For me, it was, it's only been three years. I can't imagine the eighteen years and the sacrifices your wife and your family has, you know, allowed for you to be here and represent the community. And I wish you well. I think you'll find something else to, you know, involve yourself in, and I appreciate your hard work for us.
Thank you, Julie.
Janine?
I didn't mean to laugh. I was just, your wife is probably like going, please, stay on the school committee.
Exactly.
Stay on the school committee.
Actually, there's a lot of people my family didn't know I was on the school committee. I've been here for eighteen, they don't know where I go, leave the house. In fact, I didn't want to tell her that I wasn't running again, because I could have got out of the house two nights a week without any questions asked.
Julie, it's been very nice to have met with you and, and served on the school committee. And you have brought a lot of good ideas and pointed out a few flaws. And so it's been good that you're here. I don't know why you're leaving.
It's good to have someone who is actually rationable, rational, and has reason, and can actually convince Jerry and, and me to do things.
That's right.
That hasn't happened a lot over the years, so that's very good.
Thank you.
So you have a very good determination that, that helped us, you know. So, thank you for having been here, and I hope that your family enjoys you when you are no longer rushing off to meetings.
Thanks. I appreciate it.
And as for Jerry, oh my gosh, it's your fault that I'm here.
I'm sorry. I apologize to the town.
No, it's been a pleasure serving with you. You wise cracks are always cute and to the point, not too cutting, so we're going to miss that, your smart wit. And it's been a pleasure serving with you, not only on the school committee, but also on the secondary school building committee. Our Thursday mornings up at the trailer, the morning.
Oh, yeah.
Made these past five years fly, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's going to accuse you of being late to every meeting now that Jerry's gone? Are you going to miss that?
No, John's already picked up.
Jerry's lying.
She's passionate with it. When Julie was running, I think, oh, this is going to be a pain in the back. I really thought she was going to be a, I don't want to use that description, but, but she, she really contributed. I'm really sorry she's leaving. I wouldn't say that if I didn't mean it. I think that she's a valuable, valuable person to have on the school committee, because she's a teacher, because she has the experience. She can bring historical perspective from other communities into the, into the meetings. She did a tremendous, she's got perfect attendance. She didn't miss a single meeting, which is hard to do when you have two kids at home. She, she did great work for us on the community, the capital planning, whatever it is, dealing with our friends on the board of selectmen and the finance committee, and getting great results. So I really do, I wish you were staying. Not that I'm discouraging anybody else from coming on board, but, but you did a great job, Julian. You changed me from a detractor to a real fan of yours.
Great, thank you.
Scott?
Nothing, I'm just kidding. I mean, I don't know, I'll just repeat everything everybody else has said. But for me, you know, first year here, I think this has been a great experience, a great committee. I think in particular, I've learned from Julie and Jerry. Julie's one of the only people on here that has kids still in the schools, only one with young kids in the schools. So I think I relate to her on a lot of things, you know, and, you know, we're probably more willing to listen to people talk about things like kindergarten than, you know, other, other people on the committee are. So, you know, I think it's been great to kind of learn from her. I'm not a teacher, and so I don't see things from the same perspective you do, and so I think it's been really useful to talk to you about, you know, from the teacher's perspective and from, you know, a parent of young children who are a little bit older than mine than through it. Like, it's been useful. I mean, like, I think, when I ran last year, I said, one of the reasons I wanted to run last year was just to get on this committee to specifically learn from you guys, because I knew you weren't, you may, you were considering not running again. And so, I mean, I thought it was great to be able to learn from you, and I really appreciate that. Jerry, I mean, as a lawyer, I mean, I think you've done a lot behind the scenes with the negotiations and some of the budget stuff that people don't appreciate. And I've had a lot of conversations with you about that, and I've really tried to learn as best I could from that. I mean, I think the most shocking thing is that you actually won election every year, and you actually got to go out on your own terms. And I don't, I don't know that that's going to happen with me. It's nice that, you know, eighteen years later, you can get a bowl rather than kind of your meeting after the election about that, but, no, I mean, it's been great. I mean, you're, you keep it light, you keep it funny, and, I don't know, I mean, the amount of work that you guys have both put in has been great. And so, you know, I've learned a lot from you guys, and, again, I mean, I think there were certain people that pushed me, but you were also one of the ones that every, when I leave meetings, you kept saying, oh, papers come out next week, and so, you know, it was good. And I had a lot of conversations with you beforehand. Mel didn't really want me to run.
I was going to say, I never wanted you to run, and unfortunately Jerry-
I apologize to town. I recorded Scott and Janine.
So, no, it's been great.
Thank you, Scott.
So, thank you.
So, anybody in the audience, I see Mr. Delaney here. I don't know if he wants to say anything, and if he does, I'd like, could you bring him a microphone? And then I'll have Mr. Bernard, please.
No, no pressure, Mr. Delaney, but we're bringing a microphone just in case you want to speak.
He's so, he's so bad, he doesn't really like to speak in public.
Right. No, thank you. Sean Delaney, Seven Dix Road. I'm here tonight to thank the two members of this committee who are going into retirement. Julie, I, I think you brought interesting perspective to the board. It's been touched upon because your, your professional role as a teacher, I think that was an asset to this committee, and I think you contributed tremendously over the three years you were here. Julie and I have become writing buddies on the North Reading Get Fit Crew on Saturday mornings, and just listening to her tell her stories about what she does to get to meetings and juggle kids and activities. I was like, I, I don't know how you did it. I really don't. But thank you for your volunteerism, the three years you put on. I don't think you're going to disappear completely.
No.
I have a sense that you won't.
Unfortunately.
As I thank anyone who steps up and volunteers and puts themselves out there. But you were a very contributing asset to this committee, and I, for one, from this town, appreciate that. And thank you, and whatever you choose to do in the future.
Yeah.
Jerry, where to begin? Let's see, I saw Jerry for the first time, I think, roaming around the halls and moving just to court. Knew he was from North Reading, didn't know he was on the school committee, then got to know him a little bit, as his lawyering skills impressed me as I watched him in the courtroom. And then I chose to get involved myself in town, and went to see Jerry, convinced me not to run, actually, for board of selectmen, because his pal Phil Dardino was running for reelection.
Oh, that's right.
So he talked me out of that a little bit, and then I talked to more people than I chose otherwise, and ran for the board of selectmen. So Jerry started out as a mentor for me when I got involved, and now we're pretty good friends. And that's one of the things that grows out of getting involved in this community. You meet people like Jerry, you become friends with them, and, and that will continue on. But in terms of Jerry, years of experience on the board of selectmen, on the school committee for over twenty years. I don't know how any one person has done that and contributed in the ways that you have, as Mel had highlighted. This community probably wouldn't have a bachelor school if it wasn't for Jerry Venezia. I know there's a lot of other people involved, too. But Jerry ran that, as Mel said. It was a non-union job, it was being picketed, but Jerry went down there with his consigles and took care of that. And look at that, that's, that's not just a rehab, that's, that's a new school we got there as well, through the efforts of Jerry and others. And what we sit in today in this building here is in large part to Jerry's efforts. Give us what we paid for our Buena Que, if you leave us with no money, just give us two new schools. Well, I think we're going to get there, Jerry. It's a long time in Curry.
I hope it all works.
But, you know, I guess it's a long way of saying that I think Jerry's service to this community is unparalleled, unprecedented. I don't think we'll ever see the likes of a Jerry Venezia again in North Reading. We will see, see people come out and volunteer and put their name out there and run. I know there's a couple of candidates here for school committee this evening. I wish them well tomorrow. But for the longevity that Jerry had and the energy that he brought with it is just unparalleled. As I said, I was raised by a full-blooded Italian mother. I think that's where I got my negotiating skills. And then my mentor, Jerry Venezia, helped me hone my negotiation skills. And I know that Jerry continued fighting through today, in fact, his last day. I think he was trying to strong-arm the, at least the finance committee, if not the board of selectmen, to give a couple more dollars to the school committee, as he should. But that's what Jerry is. Jerry's working this job as a school committee member to the last minute. And the town of North Reading, the generations of schoolchildren that have come through over the last two-plus decades, and the others that have come in the next several generations to come, have Jerry Venezia to thank for all the efforts he put in. Jerry, thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Patrick Delaney, Assistant Superintendent. Just wanted to say thank you, folks, so much. Julie, it's been great working with you, and I have to say, like, two things that come to mind for me is working with you on the math program. We had a couple of meetings on that, and I think you really helped to shape that in the last few years coming here. Obviously helping us to steer direction with digital learning and bringing in your expertise and your, and your own background in that. So I really, I think you've played a big role in that in just a few years here, but it's really had a big impact, so thank you so much. Jerry, just to thank you also, I've learned so much from, from you, working with you, and I really appreciated working with you on the, on some of the negotiation committees. I think what I've seen there especially is, you know, your ability to keep the kids in mind first, you know, and you're, and you're working so well to represent the needs of the, you know, the community and the taxpayers, but also what our teachers need, which benefits the kids, so. And I know you're a huge sports fan, and I just wanted to tell you, there's a thing called Monday Night Football. You might have forgot about that with all these Monday night meetings, but you'll be very excited to see that back in the fall again, so. And the Patriots won since you've been here on Monday nights, so you might have missed some of that, so.
Thank you, Patrick. I appreciate it. Thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you.
John, before, I just, I forgot to mention, one of the things I appreciate learning from Jerry is how to be subtle. John?
Wait, Jerry and subtle don't often appear in the same sentence, do they? For both of you, Julie and Jerry, I want to, on behalf of the district, express my gratitude to, to both of you for your years of service, your years of volunteerism. We clearly are a better school district because of both of you being involved in the school committee. Julie, as Patrick said, it's only been a short time that you've been on the school committee, but I think your, your impact will be felt for quite some time. You were a very diligent, hard-working member, as it's been said, didn't miss meetings, and when you came to meetings, you contributed, and I thank you for that. I'm not sure I'm really going to miss Jerry. I've come to that conclusion. Jerry, personally and professionally, and the one, the one thing I'm happy about you leaving the school committee is that you won't be around to roast me at my eventual retirement party.
No, I bet he'll be around.
If anybody, if anybody has ever been witness to Jerry emceeing a retirement party, it is, it is, it is unbelievable. It is great. And people who have, have had the benefit of you leading their retirement parties, I think have really enjoyed a very good time. But you have been a wonderful school committee member. You've been a great friend, Jerry. Personally, I want to thank you for fifteen years of very strong support that you gave to me for the time that I've been employed in North Reading. The building project stands, I think, as a, a pretty tall testament to your hard work, as, as it's been said. I really, you shepherding that project through with the help of other people, clearly, but your role was so active and so important, and I think clearly we are here in large part due to our efforts, so thank you very, very much for that. I know you won't be going away. I certainly hope we get to see you. But the historical knowledge that you've brought to the school committee is something that's, that's not going to be easily replaced. Good luck. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you.
Jerry, would you like to?
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody. It's been a pleasure working with all of you, and I think together, we have been able to get some things done. You know, I see Sean here and he worked on the board of selectmen and the secondary school building committee. You know, again, tireless, tireless effort on his part. I've been really blessed to have great colleagues on the school committee, including this committee, which I think is probably, and I think somebody said this the other night, the best committee we've ever had. No offense to anybody else, but I think it's a, as a working committee and a collaborative committee and a committee that works well and respects each other, this is, this has been really probably the best year we've ever had. I've said it before, and I'll say it again, that the school committee would like to take credit for any success that the school district has, but it's not really us. Believe me when I tell you, I mean, we try to not mess things up, but it really comes down to the administrative team, and I think our team is top-notch, as good as anybody has. We have not only high-quality people, but we have the continuity of having people in place for a period of time now, and they do a tremendous job. And that, I also want to thank the faculty and the staff, because I really think that's what makes this school district really good. And, and we're blessed to have those people. So, again, I think, my wife keeps asking me, are you going to miss it? And I said, I don't know, but I think it was time to go. I know there's energetic new people that are coming on with new ideas and new energy, and that's probably a good thing. So again, it's been a pleasure working with everybody. I'm going to miss Mel. Mel and I have been partners in crime for fourteen years. We always don't agree on everything. I will usually let Mel vent and scream and yell. And as I tell everybody, I wait for them to come in off the ledge, and then we basically work together to get things done.
That's true.
But the work he's done, I mean, not only on the, on the new schools, but on the athletic facilities, the athletic fields, the athletic subcommittee, his, his knowledge and his, his depth of knowledge is unparalleled. I think he knows more than almost anybody here as far as, you know, being informed about educational advancements and enhancements and things like that. So I'm going to miss him. I know that I may watch a meeting or two just to see how him and Buckley interact. That'll be interesting as the year goes along. I don't know if they'll make it for the whole year.
I think we will. I think we'll be okay.
But again, to Janine and to Julie and to Cliff Bowers and all the people I've served with, John and Michael, again, I've said it before, and I'll say it again, you guys make the system work, you make it go, and, and I appreciate all your support. Thank you.
Julie.
To begin. The commitment it takes to be on the school committee is a lot, and I've shared that with some of you over the past three years, with people in the public. But I would never take back the three years. I think asking questions, proposing, you know, different ways to go about things, I think is important. What kind of got me here was I was not in agreement with administration, with the school committee, and some people thought it was crazy to kind of jump on board, but it really opened my eyes to what it takes to represent a community, to listen to parents, to listen to teachers, to listen to administration, and hopefully make something work in a way that everything, you know, everyone benefits, most importantly, the students in town. And I'm not going away. I could never go away. So I will be tuning in and, and being here when it's important for me to be here and continue to voice my opinion, and, yeah. Thank you.
Scott?
Two, two other quick points. I mean, on Julie in particular, I think she's really taken the role, along with you, Mel, of, of being the advocate to the community. And I think she's taken that on a little bit, and I think because she is one of the only ones to have kids in the schools, she does bear a lot of comments from other people that, you know, some of the other people are like, my kids are so young, people don't know me yet. I think some of the people's kids are kind of through the school system, and so I think she's, you know, really done that a lot. And before we close Jerry's email account, I'm just hoping we can sign in to see how many unread emails actually are after eighteen and a half years. I think we need to figure out what that number is before the account's deleted.
We should print every email that he hasn't read that sits on the server. We won't be able to fit all the paper. And that's a good point, Scott, just, you know, and I know I'm taking up some of our celebration time after the meeting, but Julie has been a, you know, she and I kind of tag teamed the social media over the last three or four years, and sometimes it's not really a fun thing to do, because we get beaten up for it. But I think we've done our best to try to communicate with the community what's going on, and, you know, what the school committee's voting on, and what we're meeting about, and-
And to reach out to administration when, you know-
Exactly. Right, when we see things, right.
To kind of bridge that, that gap.
Right, that's the one thing the community should know, is when we see stuff on Facebook, most times Mr. Bernard's made aware of it, and we, and then we can determine whether it's a real issue or not, so.
She'll still do that job next year, though, so.
Julie, yeah, she'll be there, yeah.
Media.
Well, thanks again to both of you. It's been tremendous dealing with both of you. And with that, we'll get on to our agenda. Yes? Sure. You want another mic?
You want the mic?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, Michael.
That's for the, that's for TV.
Yeah, that's just, we need you the TV microphone, because we know the ratings will go up.
Thank you. Well, I'm here, meeting to come for some time. Some may know, some don't know. My daughter's a junior here in the high school. Her freshman year, she started to have some personal difficulties, and something that our family never thought we'd have to face, and we faced it, she faced it. But I must say, with the collaborative effort from everyone at the school district that's assisted her, from Jess Buckley to Bob Gannon, she's heavily involved in the bridge program now. I know you got your budget that's upcoming. I'm a strong supporter of this bridge program. If this bridge program didn't exist, or Bob Gannon or Jess Buckley weren't in this district, I don't know where we would be as a family. I don't know where my daughter would be. I'm just happy to report, it looks like she's going to complete her junior year on time. I have fourteen more months, and hopefully she will graduate, and with all the support she gets here, I believe that she would and will, and be successful. I just, it's amazing to me what they, with one student, what they have been able to do and keep her on track. I can't imagine, a district of this size, how many students that they have to assist the way they've assisted my daughter, and it's been nothing but high praise from my wife, myself, and my daughter. And whatever I can do to support that program going forward, speak on its behalf, expressed this to Mr. Gannon recently, that I'll go anywhere, because truthfully, I think it's been a lifesaver for my daughter. So I just want to express that while I was here.
Nice to hear, Sean.
Thank you. Have a good night. And Sean, I think you'll see, when you see the budget, that we are, we're continuing to beef up that area, student support services and counselors and things like that, because it's just a huge need. It's a huge need. Thanks, Sean. Thank you. Okay. So that was public input. If anybody else has anything they'd like to add that isn't on the agenda?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
You know, please, okay. Okay, so we'll move on to student report, and tonight we have Samantha Galvin.
Hi, everyone.
From the class of 2020, correct? Sorry, we kept you here for so long. You probably wondered, we have two people leaving tonight, so that's why we were getting all gushy and stuff. But you're on now. Go ahead.
Even though it's only been a week since last meeting, there's still a lot going on, as there always is. So several students attended the Wakefield Elks Students of the Month Ceremony, and that included Drillin, Kaita Madam, Alexa Wilk, Nick Carpenter, Marissa Sabia, and Andrew DePietro. And along with that, there are several other scholarships going out to the seniors. And the guidance department has put out a scholarship survey for the seniors, which is due tomorrow. And AP testing started this week. It started off this morning with AP Chemistry and AP Psychology in the afternoon. And the whole schedule for that is out for the next two weeks. And along with that schedule, the final exam schedule has also been released. Moving on to fine arts, Notorious, the school's a cappella group, has quite a lot going on for them. They're hosting Sing Fling in the auditorium on Friday, May 11th, which is for several a cappella groups. It's not a competition, it's more of a, like, fundraiser event for a cappella. And they also performed for Manchester Essex last Friday, May 3rd, and have two more performances coming up. On May 12th, they're scheduled to perform at Wakefield, also another fundraiser. And on May 17th, they're fundraising in Hamilton Wadham for singing for them. Both Notorious and Maskers just helped put up a gymnastics equipment at Shriners Auditorium as a fundraiser. So they go and they put it up and set it up really quickly. And then next Friday, so the 14th, they'll be tearing it down. So they set up the equipment and they get a lot of money for the arts for that. As far as athletics, a lot of those sports teams have been doing really well. varsity softball still remains completely undefeated with nine total wins. Girls' track won both their meets, and the boys are doing very well, one for one, one for two, sorry. Boys' lacrosse is also doing very well. They only have one loss and four wins. And yesterday, they won against Nittucket, leading 14 to 6, and that win secured their spot in the playoffs. Elections for next year's class officers and student council representatives are also coming up. The forms for that, I believe, are due the 15th. And the elections, they stagger them by a week for each grade, so those are also coming Several student council members attended Project Bread's Walk for Hunger on Sunday. So they walk 10 miles to show their support for the cause, and they help raise money while they're there, too. And this week is Teacher Appreciation Week, which Student Council also runs, so they show their appreciation and gratitude to the teachers for all that they do this entire And May 18th, the school's Red Cross Club will be hosting a blood drive in the gymnasium. For my student work this week, I decided to bring an essay which I wrote for my Spanish class. It was part of a Spanish test. So basically, we had to use commands in Spanish, and we had to kind of write a letter as if we were writing to a exchange student that was coming here and kind of tell them what they would do if they were in America and how they would get to know people. And it was cool to kind of use, like, our experiences and apply that directly to the language. And it kind of made you think about how maybe stuff we see as normal, people from other cultures don't see as normal, so you still have to explain that to them. So it was a pretty cool activity to put your mindset in someone who isn't from here.
Any questions for Samantha?
What does she think of Jerry?
It's amazing how much goes on in a week at the high school.
That's right. It's only one week, right?
Yeah.
That's true.
Okay. We're all set, Samantha.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha.
You might need to stay because I don't read Spanish.
I think Mr. Bernard, you'll get her paper.
I will, yes, yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Samantha.
Okay, next we have continued business. We actually had an SSBC meeting.
We had an SSBC meeting.
And not a long, lengthy meeting, but I guess there is somewhat of an update. I don't know if Janine, you want to start, or Jerry, or John, or whoever wants to.
Yeah, I think, I think one of the things that was most important that we talked about at the meeting was to pave the access road at the Batch Elder School site to joining, that joins the high school site, as a road that had suffered significant damage when the old high school was torn down, because that's where much of the heavy trucking took place, was to remove the debris from the old high school when it was razed. And I think that was, you know, a significant achievement on the meeting last week. So that project, we anticipate, will start paving. I've been in touch with the town engineer, the Newtown engineer, about just some early notification of that because we have a lot of activities taking place in early June, graduation, field days for the Batch Elder School that will be making their way over to the high school site, so, high school field site. So, you know, we'll monitor that. I don't have an exact date for when that will take place.
John, is that the road in front of the housing?
Yeah, in front of PBD Court, yeah. So if you...
Couple of speed bumps on there that really need to be dealt with.
Right. It's right where you take, kind of like, when you take the turn from the Batch and then in front of PBD Court leading to the newer parking lot, it's that stretch of roadway there that's probably a couple of hundred feet, would you say?
Yeah, a couple of hundred feet. It accesses baseball, the entire athletic area.
Yeah, yeah. And they also are gonna remove some fencing in that area.
Right, the fences, and they're gonna do the sidewalk, too.
No longer needed.
Right.
Trying to think, what else? What else was talked about?
That was about it, I mean.
It was a short meeting, that was a pretty significant piece of it.
There's nothing further to report as far as the closeout.
I gave some updates on some projects that were outstanding that weren't, they weren't really punch list items, but just some updates on some things that the school department had been working with, at times with people from the project, the principals of the project to resolve. But I think, you know, we've continued, I think, to learn a lot about the operations of this building, which are very sophisticated, as we all know. But I think the progress has been good, and I think it's been productive.
Anything else? Janine, Jerry? Okay, thank you. Next, we have Steve McManus here from CPAC, and we have Cynthia Conan, our Director of Pupil Personnel Services, with Steve. So Steve, thank you for your patience, and we'll turn it over to you. Oh, can we get a mic? Can you get a mic? Sorry, Michael, I'm making you a lot of...
That microphone works just for the cable.
Right.
You're not gonna hear anything different.
Oh, okay.
Just for the cable television.
Thanks for the heads up.
Good evening, members of the school committee. For the past three years, I've had the pleasure of collaborating with Mr. Stephen McManus, our CPAC president. Together, we have established a strong partnership between the CPAC organization and the school district. I really want to take this opportunity to publicly thank you for allowing me to be part of the planning and coordination of all the events that we've done. I really appreciate that, and it's helpful to me in my role as Director of PPS, so thank you for that. Absolutely. I'm very excited and looking forward to next year and continued collaboration. So, at this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Steve McManus.
Thank you, Cynthia, and thank you, members of the school committee, for having me back again. As Cynthia said, my name is Steve McManus, and I'm the President of the North Reading Special Education Parent Advisory Council. I have two boys. Patrick is in fifth grade at the Hood, and Matthew's in fourth grade at the Little School. I'm here today to talk about who we are, how we've been active in the past year, and what our goals are for next year as an organization. The CPAC's duties include, but are not limited to, advising the district on matters that pertain to the education and safety of students with disabilities, meeting regularly with school officials, participating in the planning, development, and evaluation of the school district's special education programs, and advocating for the appropriate supports and special education services necessary to meet the individual needs of children with disabilities living in the district, and to ensure that each child receives the individualized supports and special education services that they are entitled to under applicable federal and state laws and regulations. Students that fall into these categories have been determined to have a disability and that the disability requires special education. So I'd like to just walk through our year of programming and events. We've had a busy year and continue to serve as a resource, not only for the special ed community, but for the general population as well. You know, to any of our programs are not, invitation goes out across the entire district, not just to parents and guardians of special education students. A focus of our group is to provide programming for a wide range of ages and concerns. And so our first program this year was held the first week in October, and for the first time, we started off the year with just a simple meet and greet, which was an informal discussion with no outside speaker. We found over the years that many special education parents and guardians do not know exactly what a CPAC is, or that we even exist in the first place. So we wanted to provide a forum to introduce parents, introduce ourselves, and to provide an overview of what we're about, and outline the other workshops we had planned for the year. There were some really good conversations, and a big takeaway for us as a CPAC board was that parents are really looking, in addition to the programming, really looking for opportunities to network and meet with other parents in a similar situation. You know, it can be very isolating to be a parent of a special education child, so that feedback came through loud and clear. And so, for the rest of the year, for our programming, you know, we included a half an hour to an hour of just open door networking that parents were invited to. So if a speaker started at seven, you know, we'd open our doors at six or 6:15 to allow parents to come and mingle and just talk about resources and just connect with other folks. In November, we hosted a workshop by Terry Farrell, the Project Director for the Autism Insurance Resource Center. This workshop covered information regarding autism insurance in Massachusetts and included information about mass health, how to figure out coverage and eligibility, premium assistance, and navigating the Health Connector. This is an incredibly complicated topic and generated lots of great questions, and we're planning on having Ms. Farrell back again because there was plenty of information that we didn't cover, and she volunteered to come back. It was a well-attended meeting. In February, we held our Required Basic Rights in Special Education workshop with the support of John Bernard's staff and the PPS department. Our CPAC is a paid member of the Mass PAC, which is a statewide organization that provides information, training, and networking opportunities to CPACs within Massachusetts and professionals who we work with. As part of the membership, we had a speaker from the Mass PAC present this workshop to our group, and the question and answer session was, again, really good, and there was a lot of good knowledge shared at this presentation. Prior to the speaker, Cynthia Conan and her staff, Gina Sacco, Elementary Coordinator for Special Education, Maureen Ryan, Secondary Coordinator for Special Education, and Andrea Barlow, Team Chair for the Middle and High School, came to the group, introduced themselves, and took some time for question and answer from the parents that were there. So, special thank you to Cynthia and her staff for volunteering their time to come in the evening and support our group. Our last speaker of the year was in March, and this was another speaker from the same organization, the Mass PAC. The workshop covered effective communication and the IEP, Individualized Education Plan. This was a workshop designed for parents and professionals and included communication skill techniques and pitfalls to avoid to help parents engage effectively in the IEP process through clear and concise communication. And prior to our speaker that evening, Superintendent Bernard volunteered to come and speak to our group. He gave a history of his career in education, the changes he's seen in special ed throughout his career in education and also in North Reading, in North Reading's commitment to special education programming. So, thank you again to Superintendent Bernard for volunteering to come to our group. You know, part, and a very important part of our mission and what we want to be involved in is collaborating with the North Reading community with programming and topics related to special ed. And probably the best highlight of that is our continued involvement with the North Reading Top Soccer Program, which is now in its fifth season in the spring, and they actually do winter soccer now. Top Soccer is a community-based training and team placement program for young adults, I'm sorry, young athletes with disabilities organized by Youth Soccer Association volunteers, most notably Joe Ladosky. The program has 37 soccer players who probably wouldn't be able to play soccer if it wasn't for this program, and each of those players has a volunteer buddy to help them out, most of whom are North Reading High School students. Typically, they're 40 to 45 buddies each week, and this program has grown to include students from Lawrence, Reading, Stonem, Danvers, Medford, Linfield, Middleton, Methuen, Andover, and Derry, New Hampshire. So they've really cast a wide net very quickly. The collaboration has worked out really well for all involved, and we're looking forward to continuing to work with not only Top Soccer, but other members of the North Reading community who want to start programming like this and work with the special ed parent group within town. So this past March, Vicky Labriola, the Secretary and Co-Chair of the CPAC, attended the Federation for Children with Special Needs Convention in Boston. I went last year, so Vicky went this year. It was a one-day conference titled Visions of Community, and her attendance was paid for by our membership in the Mass PAC that I referenced earlier. She went to three workshops. One was about inclusion, and inclusion is when, you know, some students on IEPs will be given a chance to be included with the general population of the school, and how to do it properly, or properly, beyond the classroom walls, maximizing the family's role as the first teacher, and problem-solving our way to positive behaviors. So, Vicky asked me, said that some of her takeaways were focusing on community outreach efforts to keep CPAC relevant and involved. And back to what I was saying about the Top Soccer, that's a great program, or example of that. The CPAC can be something to most people, can't be everything to everybody, but we can do our best to be relevant in some capacity to everyone, looking at what the district does right to learn how to successfully address what can be improved. And, you know, when Mr. Bernard came to our meeting, he asked for honest and open feedback about what the special ed parents liked and what we wanted to see as improvements. And so that was, I thought, very forthright of you to ask that question, and was really appreciated. Embracing the newly diagnosed students, finding ways to connect, and, you know, over the years, I've found that the majority of our programming is attended by parents and guardians of a newly diagnosed child. You know, sort of, you're thrown into something that you never really thought you'd be thrown into, and the CPAC really wants to be a resource and available to parents and guardians in that situation. Vicky has also, this year, started to run the North Reading CPAC Facebook page. We got this idea from surrounding towns that we collaborate with, and, you know, on that page, Vicky shares information and events, including the information she learned at the Mass PAC conference. The public's not able to post to the page, so Vicky runs the whole thing, and we have 90-plus followers so far in a very short amount of time. In addition, she posts information about Autism Awareness Month, and this month being May, the focus is going to be towards Mental Health Awareness Month. So she's very active with that and really, really good at it. Our programming for the year actually just ended this past week, so this timing of my talk is very good. On Thursday, May 2nd, and then on Friday, the 3rd, we hosted a showing of the movie Angst, raising awareness around anxiety. And the event was funded in collaboration with the school, district, and also the Community Impact Team. So many thanks to those organizations for their support. The movie's intended to start community conversations about anxiety and provide tools, resources, and hope for an issue that addresses all of us to some extent. Vicky Labriola also organized this event, reached out with the producers and coordinated screenings, and also moderated a group discussion after the movie was shown. Special thanks to Vicky for organizing this event. We've been wanting to do a movie of something like this for a while, and it took us a couple of years to find one that we thought that we would want to get ourselves behind and sponsor, and it was thanks to her tireless efforts that it came through. Included in, so what we did was, we showed the movie, and then Vicky, the movie was 56 minutes, which left us an hour to, for Q and A from both parents, and there was some students who came to the showing as well, that the screening is intended to be shown to students. So included in the panel discussion that I'd like to thank were Dr. Jacqueline Mansfield, the school psychologist for the Hood School, Mike Rosa, Coordinator of the School Counseling Services for North Reading Public Schools, and Lindsay Jervino, Licensed School Adjustment Counselor. Many thanks to them for volunteering their time, and it certainly generated a lot of good Q and A, like I said, on a topic that is very common. And one of the big takeaways that we had from this event that parents suggested was, you know, thank you for hosting this and showing this, but we'd love for more students to be able to see this movie and perhaps weave it into a school day. And we had talked about that as a group, as a CPAC, and collaborating with John and his staff. You know, by the time the movie was sort of green-lighted, for lack of a better phrase, it was probably mid to late January, and it just, we didn't quite have the logistics to pull off, and there's issues with, number of times you can show the movie with the screening, but, you know, I think definitely, you know, something that we're already talking about doing is finding a way to try to incorporate it into the school day next year. So, looking forward to those discussions and finding out if there's a way to do it. In addition, you know, I continue to work with, parents in the community will come to me with questions about their rights as special education parents. If there's a situation that maybe they didn't feel like was handled to their liking, they can ask me about it, and Cynthia and I work collaboratively with that as well. Cynthia also asked me to come to a presentation by a group that, a software company that developed an app called Show My Day. So something that's very useful for many kids in the special education population is to have a visual outline of your day, and historically, this has been done by, like, you know, a schedule, which is kind of, it'll have like the hours of the day, and then the old-school way is to use Velcro, like, so for Mondays, different than Tuesdays, and so you swap out, you know, GE Gym versus Art with Velcro tabs. And so this app is designed to be able to do all that electronically. So she asked me to come both as a parent and as a member of the CPAC for input on that. Last but not least, I'd certainly like to thank Superintendent Bernard and his staff for their support. I attend the monthly meetings of the Superintendent's Parent Advisory Council, and John and his staff, as we've indicated, have been nothing but supportive. In addition, I'm very happy to say that we have a collaborative and positive relationship with Cynthia and the rest of the PPS office. Special thanks to Cynthia for her time and her tireless efforts. You know, she comes to every one of our workshops. And, you know, I always appreciated that, but at the last workshop of the year, we had a parent come from a neighboring town. It's actually pretty typical for us to draw parents from surrounding communities. Sometimes it's easier to go and ask questions of a speaker about rights in education, or how do I handle conflict with the school district? If you're not in your own school district, you can, you know, if it's, you don't want to necessarily ask around people that you know. And this was the meeting that Cynthia was at, and John spoke to, and this woman said to me, you, your superintendent and your director of PPS are at your meeting? I said, yeah, it's great, we work really closely with them. And she said, we don't, we don't get any support from our director of PPS. Our director of PPS has never been to one of our events, and, you know, certainly the superintendent has never volunteered to come out. So, gave me a whole new level of appreciation for John and his staff and Cynthia going above and beyond their responsibilities to us, certainly as a group. So, want to close by thanking them for that and certainly looking forward to another good year. Next year, we have some speakers that I'm already kind of working on scheduling and lining up. You know, last year, we had a group come out that does, a financial advisor in town whose specialty is doing financial planning for special education students and their families. He wants to come back out, and we had another group approach us about doing a workshop for siblings to support siblings of special ed students. So, those are some of the ideas. So, those are some of the ideas that we have already in place for next year. So, every year, I say to myself, "I'm not going to wait till the start, start of the school year to map out the rest of the year, I've got to start doing this during the summer." So, I'm trying to stay ahead of the curve this year.
I, I want to thank Steve for his great leadership over the last few years in this committee. It's taken a huge leap in terms of both, I get, I think it's influence on the school department and helping us to see where we need to make changes, and also on the community. So, I really want to thank you. I think you've been a, a great vocal leader for the special education community, so I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you very much.
If anybody else has any questions or comments?
No, I, I'll just echo what, what Mr. Webster said, and, uh, Mr. Delaney said no one's going to beat the eighteen years. I have a feeling Mr. McManus is going to approach that. I know, he's been here for a few years already, and it, it is a great program. I went to some last year, I wanted to go to more this year, but I, you know, I think it's, uh, it's important, and it's, and I like that you heard from people that they wanted a chance to come together, and you're trying to incorporate that into it as well. I mean, I was here last year when you spoke, and, I mean, it's just great, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And I also want to echo, I think what, what Mr. Venazzia said earlier was, you know, that, you know, you can't look at the school committee and say, "What a great, what a great school district we have." It's, it's the administration, and I think Cindy is, Cynthia is a key part of that team. And when you see tonight in our budget, what we're, um, adding for new positions, which we worked really hard to add, a big part of it is, um, you know, Cynthia's influence and input into that budget and, and the kind of positions we need to help serve, uh, the always-evolving student population. It, you know, it's different every year, and you've got to have those positions filled, everything from, you know, first-grade reading teacher to a twelfth-grade adjustment counselor. And so, you know, that, that movie Angst, I think, gets to the whole need for adjustment counselors and, and psycho- psychologists in, in the school district to help those kids get through the day, never mind the week or the year, get through the day. So, again, I, I thank you for your, um, for your support. John?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Just a real quick comment, uh, Mr. McManus heaped a lot of praise on the district and its personnel, but I, I would be remiss if I did not say that it is a pleasure to work with Steve, and, and his, uh, positive nature and, and, um, his collaborative style, uh, means a lot to us, too. So, it, I think we are as successful as we are, to the extent that we are successful, is because of the relationship, um, that we have with you and the CPAC. So, your leadership and your positive nature is not to be overlooked, so thank you for that, Steve, your a pleasure to work with.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And I do also want to acknowledge, you did, Mr. Webster, and I thank you for that, but acknowledge Cynthia Conant, who has done a very nice job in her role, um, you're, you're finishing up on year, year, year three now, and it's, uh, she's really, I think, the, the movement has been very positive, and I thank you for that publicly.
I agree. Anyone else? Okay, at this point, we'll move to, um, the budget.
She came for you. Chris came for you.
You ought to have entertained a couple more comments, Mr. Venazzia, from people that came.
Uh, if, if there are a few more comments on Mr. Venazzia, I, I will entertain them now.
Well, it depends on what they have.
If anybody would like to say something about, anybody out there like to say something about Mr. Venazzia before?
I wanted to drop by to say thank you for all of the years, not only during my time as, as a teacher in the district, but now as an administrator, and I have to tell you, the thing that has really struck me the most was I grew up in a city where the school committee did not always play nice in the sandbox, and it was televised, and as a teenager, I can remember seeing it on TV and thinking to myself how embarrassed I was by how these people were interacting with each other, and it, it was, it was really kind of embarrassing to me as a teenager, and it stuck with me. And so, when I came here and I got to know the school committee, and I thought to myself, "Well, this is different," because I've never met a more collaborative, caring group of individuals, and I just had to come back up to North Reading today, tonight, just to say, "Thank you for all you do, for all of you, not just for Jerry and Julie, but for everybody. I, I really do appreciate it from the bottom of my heart, so."
That's appreciated, much appreciated. And I see Mr. Bowers, he, he made a, he couldn't even be on time for Jerry and Ju- but we'll let, we'll let him speak anyway.
I just didn't get the message.
Oh, you didn't get the, oh.
I didn't realize it was six.
Oh, okay.
I thought it was six-thirty.
Okay.
And I was a few minutes late because I went to the selectments meeting, and, ahead of time. Um, I, having spent nine years on the committee, I can't imagine anybody spending twice that. Uh, and, uh, I, I truly appreciate the, um, the, the good connections and the camaraderie between the various members and the, um, the, the smooth operation. It really, uh, was never really any hostile environment, and that, uh, I spent nine years at it, and, and it was because of, uh, the other members who had been there for longer than that, that, uh, we probably had the, the legacy that we had to keep up. Uh, and, and Julie has been a, was a, was a real addition to the, to the group. I'm sorry to see her leaving so soon, uh, but, uh, I, I can understand precious, uh, people who, uh, raise in small families and, and, uh, young families and, uh, and who have, uh, uh, other things that they do other than just being retired, you know, and, uh... But I, I truly appreciate the, and I'm sorry I was late.
That's okay.
Missed all of the other.
It's usually Janine that's late, so, you know, we'll give you, we'll give you a pass.
I'll stay late, I'll stay, stay late to make up for it.
All right.
About that.
Well, thank you, Cliff.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, we're going to turn it over now, uh, to Michael Connolly for his name, and the budget, which we're going to vote on tonight. Mr. Connolly's promise will be extremely brief tonight.
Yes.
So, we can get out to our post-game celebration.
Hitting the highlights this evening. So, I have a, I have a relatively quick PowerPoint, which I'll move through pretty quickly. Um, now, some information did just change, so I tried to hand out a supplemental handout. I worked on it pretty quickly based on some of the information that just changed as of the meeting at four PM today. Um, but I, I hope that this evening will certainly bring about a conclusion to a very kind of long process, but I think we've certainly made some, uh, some tough decisions, but over the last, you know, week or so, to recommend a budget, uh, for approval this evening. So, just to bring as a reminder, um, if you go back to where we kind of started with our recommended budget that we presented through the months of March and April, we were originally requesting a budget of an increase of five-point-three percent, thirty-one million, one ninety-eight, five thirty-three was the appropriation we were looking for in FY nineteen, which was a little bit above level surfaces. Um, based on the final revenue plan, really actually as of four PM today, um, we, we have a final revenue, uh, school department budget guideline from the finance planning team and the finance committee of thirty million, seven forty-six, zero forty-seven. That would be a three-point-eight percent budget increase over fiscal two thousand and eighteen. So, the amount from where we started, which was the, uh, previously recommended budget, is four hundred fifty-two thousand, four eighty-six. So, this list here, attempt, would essentially, um, balance the FY nineteen budget and, uh, essentially make the changes that would be needed from our recommended budget down to a, a, um, a balanced budget for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen. Now, everything kind of above the line is sort of either new, new initiatives that we had in the, in the recommended budget, um, some new positions through NRPS twenty-twenty-one that we would recommend, you know, not, not be funded to, to meet the, the balanced budget. And then the first three items are things we've been talking about that were possibilities, um, in terms of extraordinary relief funds through the state. We, we did qualify, we did find that out over the last ten days or so, which was positive news. So, we're able to increase that offset through that additional revenue through the extraordinary relief program with the state by a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The circuit breaker program, again, along the same lines of, um, helping, uh, you know, offset our special education out-of-district tuition budget, uh, that allotment was originally approved at sixty-five percent. We now have good information from the House and the Senate and the House Ways and Means Committee that that will be funded at seventy percent in fiscal eighteen, that a lot of this carries over into next year, so we felt comfortable making a thirty thousand dollar revenue adjustment, uh, there. And then the third revenue adjustment there would be under full-day kindergarten. We had originally, because of the lower enrollment, backed off on our, um, revolving account offset for full-day kindergarten through the tuition-based full-day kindergarten program. We've, uh, will take, we feel we do have some carry, additional carryover funds available to kind of level fund that, that offset amount and make the adjustment back up by thirty thousand dollars. We also have seen some students that were initially registered in the half-day program, indicate they'd like to go into the full-day program, so that has, um, generated some additional revenue, so we felt comfortable making that adjustment. Um, we originally had three-point-nine FTE, uh, positions we were looking to fund. One was the point-five reading teacher, um, through NRPS twenty-twenty-one, so unfortunately, we're recommending, uh, at this point, we would not be able to fund that position. The other was a one-point-oh academic high school teacher to help address the student-teacher, uh, you know, class size ratios at the high school level, which we've been trying to achieve for a number of years. Uh, this would back off a point-four FTE of that, and we, we would fund point-six of that, and I'll, I'll break down those positions, the new positions in a moment. So, everything kind of below this line is our, is the administration's attempt, and I believe that, you know, the school committee at their budget workshop was in agreement of, you know, changes we would make to our expense budgets, um, that would essentially help balance off the budget. We, we looked at these as the least harmful impact with a priority in protecting the, the, the educational classroom and the curriculum, and the least impact on the overall student, you know, experience for the, for the students. Um, some of these were things that we were trying to restore. We were trying to restore a five thousand dollar line item to help offset the food service program in the amount of five thousand dollars. That's something we don't have now, and we would, we would, uh, eliminate that, that amount. The next two, small capital equipment and extraordinary maintenance, again, trying to restore items that were reduced in the past, back to prior-year levels. We'd have to hold off on doing that. Uh, school and district operating budgets, we actually re- originally recommended thirty thousand dollars, um, a little over thirty, thirty thousand dollar as a restoration. This would eliminate pretty close to, not all of that amount, but, but a, a good amount of that, you know, twenty thousand of the thirty thousand dollar restoration amount. So, there would still be some level of restoration achieved. The next two, um, our staffing, uh, changes. We do have a, um, you know, through attrition and through retirement, some special education paraprofessionals, um, you know, moving on from the district at the end of the school year. Through our analysis with the administrative team, we feel like we could absorb that position and not, not fill, not fill that with our existing, uh, you know, paraprofessional that we, that we have, uh, in, in, in district. So, that would be a savings of a one-point-oh, you know, FTE position for a special education paraprofessional. Um, we do feel like we could reduce a, um, a professional staff member from a one-point-oh to a point-five and achieve some savings. Um, the remaining items here, uh, we've got some news that a potential savings on the out-of-district tuition front from, um, you know, student that might be in a less expensive placement would net, would yield about thirty thousand dollar savings. Again, another change to the facility rental offset, this is an amount that we've been steadily increasing over the last three years, so there is some additional risk here, but we felt comfortable making that recommendation of increasing that facility rental revenue offset, and that amount, I know, just would, would go up to actually eighty-five thousand dollars, um, in, in total, and that essentially helps offset the, the building and grounds budget and the maintenance, uh, building maintenance line items and so forth. Um, this is an amount that we've, we kind of play, play with and analyze and look at past trends, and next the, you know, increase the teacher attrition retirement savings estimate. So, every year, we have staff that either retire from the district or staff that we know will, will move on and, and leave the district through a variety of, of reasons. We try to estimate that amount, um, and predict what that attrition or sa- retirement savings will be. Uh, we did get indication, really recently, as the last couple of weeks, that there'll be some additional retirements, uh, that could yield some savings that we did not have, know about previously, so we felt comfortable taking a calculated risk, I would say, here in increasing, increasing that, uh, anticipated, uh, savings from retirements and attrition. Um, this last amount here is somewhat of a balancer, we need another twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars to achieve a balanced budget. We feel through a variety of additional, kind of mainly expense line items, we talked a little bit about, you know, the legal, and we're not, you know, not, uh, making some adjustments there, uh, some calculated adjustments, um, you know, the unemployment amount, we've been doing a very good job minimizing our liability in unemployment over the last couple of years. We've seen that the actual amount be under our budgeted amount, um, over the last couple of years. We hope that we, that would be achieved next year as well. And other line items such as, you know, some, you know, postage and so forth, we would look to save and try to achieve the remaining twenty-eight thousand, seven eighty-three, but those are essentially line items we would look at, some discretionary spending, you know, reduce some line items back to levels that are closer to what the actuals maybe have been over the last couple of years to balance off the budget. So, all in all, this would achieve the four hundred fifty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars or so we would need to achieve a balanced budget. Uh, the new positions that would be funded, as a reminder, we originally asked for three-point-nine, and we would, this would achieve three-point-oh of those positions, so that, that point-five reading teacher would unfortunately not be funded, and we would achieve point-six of the desired one-point-oh academic teacher. Uh, we've talked all along throughout this process that the school adjustment counselor was a top priority, um, at the high school, and the special education elementary team chairperson has been a priority really for a number, a couple of years now at the elementary level, would be funded, and the point-four school psychologist slash adjustment counselor at the bachelor school certainly continues to be a priority. You certainly heard, um, you know, the need for the student support services, you've heard from speakers this evening, and that certainly, I, I think you know why, why that these positions are a top priority. So, these would be funded in, in, in this approach. Um, some of the conclusions, uh, what does this budget do? It certainly allows us first and foremost to meet our contractual obligations with employees and employee unions. It, again, those additional staffing positions you just saw on the prior, prior slide to really address social and emotional learning needs of students, enhance, um, our current in-district specialized programming to meet the needs of all identified students, additional staffing to better achieve sound student-teacher ratios at the high school, that point-six FTE teacher will certainly help. Um, associated cost to properly operate and maintain the middle school and the high school campus, as well as the three elementary schools, so throughout the process, you, you heard of us adjusting those line items operationally to achieve, um, the adequate preventative maintenance measures and so forth. Um, includes, uh, level funding of operating budget for the five schools in the district. It's not quite level funding, there's a small level of restoration there, so a slight correction to that, that statement. Um, it's not quite level funding it, but there's, there's a, there's some small, small id- small restoration, but not full, not to the fullest extent that we desired. And the budget allows the district to maintain level services while achieving some, but not all, of the NRPS twenty-twenty-one staffing requests, and certainly, we feel preserves the educational experience for students. So, some of these financial risks, I, you know, these trends, I've, I feel like I've been a couple fiscal years now, we've gotten to this point, and I've just kind of, um, you know, there's sort of inherent risk with any type of school municipal budget that is certainly in existence, there's, there's a lot of variables at play, but I think these are highlights, some bullets, to just remind you, us that there's certainly some, some risk involved, and by making the adjustments that we're recommending this evening to balance the budget, there's certainly some additional risk involved with doing that. Uh, potential for additional outside and/or change in placements with increased costs in the special education out-of-district tuition line item, that is always the case, it's a big variable, one of probably the largest variable in a school department budget, so that certainly exists. Reliance on some one-time projected carryover revenue, this has been something that we've kind of fallen into that reliance over the last several fiscal years, but it certainly does exist and is, is present in, as we look to balance fiscal two thousand and nineteen. We, we are, um, relying on some carryover revenue in the transportation line item, the circuit breaker offset, the tuition prepayments is predicated upon, that we would achieve a level of, uh, prepayments with funds available at the end of this fiscal year, and again, that kindergarten tuition line item, um, offset as well. The estimated teacher attrition savings may not be realized, you saw an increase to that, that's additional risk associated with that increase. Uh, again, we, we feel it's calculated risk, but there's certainly risk there. Limited ability to, for us to address emergency maintenance issues, so the elimination of extraordinary maintenance for the second or third straight year, as well as small capital line items, does limit our ability to be able to, to do this. And as you saw, this year, it's always possible that the state budget may not fully fund circuit breaker revenue offset projection. So, this assumes that we, that that program at minimum would be funded at a level of between seventy and seventy-two percent, and it could be a chance that could be less when everything is finalized, and we would not know that until the end of June. And then you saw the food service program, uh, that performance can be difficult to predict, although it's done very, very well, and made huge strides over the last few years. We are trending right now slightly below a break-even program, although I'm told we had a very good month of April, that, um, um, so there's always that risk there, and that was that attempt to add that five thousand dollars back in, you know, to eliminate that, there's added some, some associated risk with doing that. But again, I think the calculated risks, as we, uh, discussed, um, otherwise, I think it's fair to say the administration would not have been recommending them at the school committee budget workshop. So, that being said, I'll certainly open up to comments. Um, this would be the budget motion that we would ask the school committee to, to make this evening. Um, the slide that I printed out at about five fifteen PM today after the, the changes, um, unfortunately, I forgot to change that number, but I've changed it here on the slide. So, the thirty million, seven hundred forty-six thousand and forty-seven dollar
Oh, four seven.
Amount is Amount is what we, is really what we're looking to make the motion on this evening. It is about a 3.8 percent increase, which is, would actually be the increase that we've had in the last two budget years. So the three straight years in a row, we have a budget that's 3.8 percent higher than the previous, than the current, current fiscal year. Little over $1.1 million higher than FY18.
So before I ask for comments and questions, I want to thank Michael especially, his team, the entire administrative staff, the administrative team, town officials, and everybody for coming together and getting us to a point where we can add some critical positions that we feel are necessary and that the school district, you know, and that school children need. It's not everything we wanted. It's, we're never going to get everything we wanted. There are some critical positions we aren't filling. I can tell you that at the budget workshop, the school committee was, initially, the administration was not recommending the teacher at the high school. The, at the budget workshop, the school committee was, was, I'd say, pretty adamant that we add at least something to the high school because of the oversized classes there. And the committee has, the administrator's pledged to add the .6 and also pledged to work towards doing whatever possible to make that a 1.0. So I thank them for that commitment. So with that, I'll open it up to questions and comments from the committee.
Julie, anything?
I don't think so.
Scott?
I always have something.
Well, that's why I went to you. I should have gone to you.
Keep it short.
So the only, what I would just say is, I mean, I think, I, I know that people want to try to keep the costs down when we can and hope for more money to come, but I just want to say again, we have an obligation every single year to educate the children in the district, and we can't wait for additional tax revenues to come. Some of the position, positions that we're finally able to fund have been on this list for at least one year, if not a couple of years. There are some that have been on there even longer that are still not being funded, and so as I see it, it's really, it, in addition of 1.5, because in the cost reduction, we're losing 1.5 FTs as well. So it's one and a half positions being created af, after no, no positions were created last year. And so I think we have that obligation. I appreciate the board of selectmen. I mean, a couple of them have come to the meetings and, you know, have expressed that they understand that these are needs, and this isn't primarily, you know, getting more teachers. This is looking at the other aspect of education, the social-emotional learning aspects. And to me, that's, Mr. Delaney talked tonight about what that means to parents that have a student that needs that support. It's, it also is a safety issue. I mean, after some of what's happened this year in this country, I think saying that, you know, more than 800 students for one adjustment counselor is just not a safe position. And so I think we all felt that this was a year we had to add that. None of, nobody wants to look back and say we regret something because we didn't find the money to add what we needed to do. The, you know, the teacher at the elementary school about special education, the team chairperson, we've been talking about that as, you know, trying to directly address one of the major budget drivers that we have every year, and so we're finally doing that. And I really hope that we can, you know, somehow even see what sort of savings we've had by, you know, that position. And hopefully, next year, we can say that, you know, we know that we've saved a couple hundred thousand dollars by finding a couple hundred thousand dollars this year. And so, I mean, that's my, that's my general comments. I mean, it's, we always want more, and I'm sure there's lots of programs we want to do, but in general, I feel very, very happy with the budget that we, we're at right now.
Jerry?
Yeah, I agree with what Scott said, actually. I think it was well said. I think the admin, the administration, the finance planning team, and, you know, the board of selectmen, the members of the finance committee that are on that team did a good job, worked hard. Don't always agree, but we did come to a, I would say, a fairly good compromise as to how we're going to get through the next fiscal year. Michael, is that number, the slide had $30,746, and the handout has, the, the motion has $30,761?
It's forty, forty-six.
Forty-six, yeah.
Okay, all right.
The last slide didn't get changed.
It's on the screen now.
Okay. I just want to thank Michael for doing, as always, a great job. I mean, we have as much information, I think John was bringing it out today, that our budget, preliminary budget handbook is, has as much information, I think, as anybody does, and it's available to everybody so that they can go through it line by line, dollar by dollar, cent by cent. So thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Jean?
Of all the budgets that I've seen come through, this is probably the best one, just because we were able to add the necessary things without waiting eight or 10 years.
Right.
Good point.
Thank you.
Ms. Bernard?
Just very quickly, Mr. Chairman, I do, I, I want to echo what some of you said about acknowledging Michael's effort to, to bring this, bring us to this point. Michael, thank you very much. You, you spend an inordinate amount of time, and I appreciate that. And, and to all of you, the committee has, you know, has really put in a lot of, a lot of hours, whether it's finance planning team meetings, whether it's budget workshops, or these meetings with a public hearing on the budget and such. And I appreciate the, the respect that you show the administration's efforts to, to do our best work to, to bring about the positions that we think we need to have for our students. So thank you all for that, and as well, the finance planning team. Mr. Vannecia said it, and I think it, it can't be overstated, that the town, the model of the finance planning team that this town has is, is a very effective one, and I think the, the fact that we're staying in constant communication with each other through the finance planning team has, has, has certainly been something that's beneficial to the district, so I want to acknowledge their, their efforts as well.
Just like 30 seconds before we vote, I think if, if you could have attended the last budget workshop, you, you'd see, in my opinion, the way a superintendent-schoolcommittee relationship is supposed to work. We weren't happy with the budget. Some of us weren't happy with the budget that the administration presented. We told the administration that. It didn't break out, break out into a Donnybrook. It broke out into a discussion as to how we can get where we need to get. We compromised. They're going to work to try to get at 1.0 position at the high school. But when I talk about how well this committee works with the administration, that's the way it's supposed to work. It's not supposed to end up with people throwing rocks at each other at the end of a meeting. So I appreciate the administration listening to us, mainly me, kind of pop off at the last meeting, and I appreciate
Never heard you pop off before.
And I appreciate how far we got toward what we wanted to, to accomplish. So with that, I will entertain a motion on the 2019, fiscal 2019 budget.
Mr. Chairman, move that the school committee approve and hereby adopt the final fiscal year 19 school operating budget of $30,746?
Yep.
$746,047, which represents an increase of 3.8 percent or $1,127,502 over the
No, no. I gotta read the slide, sorry.
One, one, two.
One million, one hundred and two, one hundred and twelve.
One million, one hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and two dollars over the fiscal year 18 appropriation of, and that number's correct, right? $29,633,545.
Second.
So you have a motion by Mr. Vannecia, second by Ms. Kopke. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Not to blame them, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we're gone, Julie. They can't do anything.
Hearing none? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you again, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Great, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Michael.
Okay, next. We need a motion to open our school choice hearing, which should be pretty quick, a motion in a second, so we can open our hearing on the school choice vote.
You make a motion to open up the
School choice.
School choice vote, thank you. Public hearing.
You have a second, please.
Second.
Motion by Janine, second by Julie. I think this is, I think we have to take an individual vote. Scott?
I think that.
We have, I think we have to take an individual vote, because it's a hearing. Jerry?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Mel?
Aye.
Julie, aye. Okay, this is, as I say, it'll be a quick hearing. North Reading has never been a school choice district for many reasons. Now, for one reason, we don't feel that the program, as it currently exists, supports all of the students in the state and puts some students at a disadvantage. And I don't know if anybody here at this table has a different opinion this year, but, you know, we've never been a school choice district. And to explain what school choice is, is, and there are many districts on the North Shore that are school choice, it allows students in your district to go to schools in other choice districts, and allows you to accept for tuition, correct?
Correct.
School choice students from other towns. However, the one thing I've always seen is the cost oftentimes doesn't balance out, and it's always a risk in terms of the cost. And plus, it doesn't, everybody can't, everybody can't take advantage of that opportunity.
That's right.
They can't find a way to get, if, they may want to go to a school in North Reading, but they can't get transportation to a school in North Reading, or to Masco, or to, you know, Beverly High School, or wherever it may be. So our, our district has always voted against being a school choice district. I don't know if any other committee members have any comments on it.
No, during the time I've been here, we've never voted for it, and that language is interesting, the language for the vote, but that's the language we've always used as well.
Right. The motion has always been that North Reading will not participate in school choice because the program, as it is presently constructed, ensures that the needs of some of the children of the Commonwealth cannot be met. And as I said, it's basically because we do not fear, feel it, it ends up being an equitable, equitable program. So unless anybody has any comments, I'll entertain a motion, and I'd ask that you read the motion again.
You're going to close the hearing and then vote?
Yes. Close the hearing this time.
Can we make a motion to close the hearing?
No, we don't have to. I can just close the hearing.
Okay.
Do you want to read?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Want to do it?
No.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, move that North Reading not participate in school choice because the program, as it is presently constructed, ensures that the needs of some of the children of the Commonwealth cannot be met.
Second.
Take your pick.
I'm going to take, I'm going to take Julie.
There you go.
Because she doesn't have any more motions to make. So we have a motion by Ms. Vannecia, second by Ms. Kopke, that North Reading, again, for the next school year will not participate in school choice. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Next, we have the superintendents. Sounds so impressive. Mid-cycle formative assessment. Sounds like, is that what you eat for breakfast, or? So Janine, we'll turn this over to you.
Yes, so I brought all of the comments together, and for the professional goal, Mr. Bernard rated himself on target for the professional practice goal, which is to ensure that they, he leads the highest level of, of effective strategic leadership for North Reading Public Schools. Some of the feedback has been John's leadership qualities continue to grow and expand. He has completely made the transformation from a school administrator to the district administration. He also has clearly earned the respect of his peers. Our schools continue to aggressively move in the right direction under John. John has exceeded the goal by not only participating in professional development, but has taken a leadership role in various organizations, resulting in the superintendent providing outstanding strategic leadership. John has continued, has continuously shown and demonstrated excellent leadership. John continues to maintain close working relationships with other superintendents. He leads this group to further development, develop key administrat, heads, sorry, administrative skills. Lastly, Mr. Bernard goes above and beyond to meet this goal. He does not simply attend professional development programs. He has taken an active leadership role in the organizations which help to further his skills. Once again, Mr. Bernard gave himself an on-target for the student learning goal. Feedback from the board. Mr. Bernard establishes an environment to support the administration, administration and student learning. He is a support for the teachers in the district and is constantly, consistently seeking out opportunities to improve. Building-based analysis of student achievement continues to occur. This enables administration to identify growth areas of improvement. Identifying areas of support, like coaches, will enable the individualized instruction to areas of need. As a teacher, a principal, and now a superintendent, John has always worked to keep the students' learning and achievements in the forefront. John has exceeded this goal by working closely with his administrative team to create the conditions necessary for all the students to achieve the highest levels. Still a work in progress, but the activities being undertaken should have move, should have us moving in the right direction. Again, Mr. Bernard gave himself on-target for the district improvement goal number one, which is to facilitate the execution of the school district's strategic plan of NRPS 2021. Some of the feedback is that NRSP, NRPS 2021 is a solid plan. The lack of funding to fully implement continues to be disappointing. John has done an excellent job to facilitate the execution of the school's district's strategic plan. The only setbacks have been due to budgetary constraints. John's work on the strategic plan is spot-on for our district. Hopefully, our budget will be able to see it to its fullest. The superintendent continues to advocate for much-needed supports, services, personnel via the NRPS 2021. Don't undercut our true needs based on the town's revenue figures. Mr. Bernard has helped to create a thoughtful and comprehensive strategic plan and consistently works to implement it. While budgetary constraints may present challenges, he is able to still find ways to move forward with the most aspects of the plan.
So, so you think that we all filled these out in a group, right? Because they all basically say the same thing, but we didn't. We all filled these out individually. There was, there was no cheating.
No.
I did copy Janine's paper.
Oh, great.
Oh, you didn't, because I didn't fill it out. So, yeah, the, the budget that we just passed is wonderful.
Right.
That it, we got it passed, so kudos again to Mike. The district goal number two is to actively participate in the comprehensive review and update of the school district's emergency operations plan, EOP. And he gave himself on-target on that as well. I think he's being modest on most of his grading. The emergency operations plan created and presented at, was a comprehensive and well-thought-out document. Mr. Bernard worked efficiently, effectively with community leaders to define the roles and responsibilities of all parties in each situation. Through the EPO, a thorough EPO, sorry, was created and implemented, as it will occur in the future. This is a very important document as, as it enables both the school and public safety personnel to deal with the emergency situations effectively. John, working with the public safety personnel, has completed a strong and easy-to-follow procedure for the district's EOP. John has done an excellent job of implementing a comprehensive emergency operations plan. Lastly, good progress being made here, but more needs to be done. Cooperation with the law enforcement appears to be solid. This needs to be a focus area moving forward. The district improvement goal number three, the superintendent will work to increase the use of social media and other technologies to serve the methods of communication. And he gave himself on-target on this, which is under, I, I believe so. Comments, lack of presence on Facebook, however, the school members have, school committee members have more than made up for this. Twitter is being used effectively by the admin, administrative team, and the websites are good, but could be better. Looking forward to see the app, which is being
Presented tonight.
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 Continues to do an excellent job. Some work still to be done. Social media is a good and bad thing. John's use of social, social media avenues has been well-disciplined. This new app sounds exciting. John continues, continues to use social media to engage the community. Mr. Bernard frequently uses many different media to communicate information. The app for North Reading will hopefully be a great way to bring information together. Though not specifically noted in this section, it bears mentioning that Mr. Bernard creates a very informative newsletter on the top, on top of communicating what else is going on in the schools. One suggestion in this area would be to balance providing information with overwhelming, and sometimes multiple messages are communicated in a very short period of time. Additionally, this goal is about the use of social media, not only by Mr. Bernard, but with, in the district, and it would be useful to see how others in the districts are using the tools which Mr. Bernard so effectively navigates. The district improvement goal number four will serve as an active partner to, in the development of the digital learning initiative in a strive to meet the objectives of the 21st century learning experience. He gave himself on-target. Comments, Mr. Bernard has been a relentless advocate for digital learning in North Reading. He has helped to
Prioritize.
Thank you.
Prioritize.
Thank you.
Then you go on.
The initiatives and support with personnel programs in focus. Mr. Bernard works well with the digital leadership team in North Reading, and the results are often shared publicly, so the community is aware of the improvements of this area. John sees and appreciates the value of technology education. Our students continue to engage in meaningful technology experiences. I'm stuttering over these words. John's understanding of the need to grow in this area is commendable. He, with the support of his He, with the support of his staff, has led the community into a computer technology-based world that continues to grow. John has done an excellent job of implementing and developing digital learning initiatives. Based on the recent presentation by Dr. Downs, the district has taken strides in this area. Great job.
Huge strides in this area. That was my comment, so I know. Huge strides. I hope you put huge in there, because I had the word huge.
All capitals, too.
Yeah, all capitals.
And I don't use that word very often, if you know what I mean. Because someone else uses it all the time. Go ahead.
Mr. Schultz?
Huge.
Okay. District improvement goal number five, the superintendent will lead, co-lead, or otherwise participate in the social, emotional learning activities that serve and address the social, emotional needs of the students, which we just heard Mr. McMahon...
Yes, McManus.
McManus speak about. Once again, he gave himself on-target on this, but I think it needs to be higher. Committee feedback, I am seeing great emphasis focused on social and emotional learning, another area in which we are heading in the right direction, but yet being held back due to lack of funding. There seems to be an increase for more social, social and emotional needs every year, though we do a good job monitoring, monitoring it, I can't say it. It will be great if the budget would better allow for staffing in this area correctly. Mr. Bernard supports social, emotional, emotional learning objectives, and improvements have been made, but there's, have been, but many have been due to great people in North Reading. This is an area where additional staffing should be prioritized in the future to truly address the needs of the students. District improvement goal number six, the superintendent will facilitate the development... Am I cutting people off?
What? That's right.
Will facilitate the development of the North Reading Parent University to further engage the community and parents on school-aged children on topics of interest and relevance. And... It doesn't show, but I'm assuming it's marked on-target. Okay. The feedback. This was a home run for Mr. Bernard. He did an outstanding job with the Parent University, developing, developing a diverse list of offerings which attracted an equally diverse group of attendance. He was able to have it all financed privately and ran without a hitch, or at least that's what it appeared in the public eye. It was a remarkable event supported by the community. Parent University was well-attended, and the attendees had positive feedback to share. The Parent University is and was an exciting idea. It was very informative and helpful. What a wonderful platform for the parents. Outstanding accomplishment initiated and carried out by the superintendent with the collaboration of many contributors from the school district. From all reports, a huge success, looking for better and bigger next year.
I can't believe I used that word twice.
Huge.
Huge.
You said it again?
Yes, there was, you want me to, that little...
Mr. Chairman, I just want to remind you that Julie and I can't vote on anything after midnight. Just, you know.
Okay, yeah. So all in all, at least from my opinion, I think that he underscored himself. I think he does a phenomenal job, and I believe, I'll let everyone else speak for him, but those are my comments.
I'd give him a contract extension and a raise.
Well, we'll get to that. I, I, I think John is on-target and maybe ahead of target on some of these. I think there are a few things that, there are programs that are in place that have to work through the system before we, you know, before the two years are up, before we can, but, but I do think that, I, I look at the digital learning plan, I mean, and I look at the, the Parent University, and I also look at the focus on social, emotional learning, and, you know, those three things alone make me extremely confident in the leadership of this district.
Julie?
I agree with everything you just said. I think we continue to be fortunate to have you here, and I'm hoping that you'll be here in the years to come, because I think you're an advocate for our students, our staff, and I'm pleased that you're here.
Thank you. Scott?
Again, I agree. I'm very happy to, you know, serve this committee with you. I think you're organized, you're on top of things, you, you put the work in, but more than that, I mean, I think you have great instincts on different things. I think you know where, not just where we, where things are now, but where we need to go, and I think you're constantly trying to make improvements, which I think you need to be able to do in this position to keep ahead of the curve, so I appreciate everything you do.
Thank you. Carrie?
John, you know, I think you're doing a great job. I know you're doing a great job, but I also want to repeat what somebody said earlier tonight. It's, it's a great team you have with Patrick and Michael, so I think the three of you guys working together have really accomplished a lot. I love the way you guys work together and, you know, and rely on each other, so, good job.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So to that end, the negotiations we had tonight with Mr. Bernard...
Could I make a comment?
Oh, go ahead, okay.
If you could, I just, I want to pick up on what Jerry, thank you, Mr. Webster, for allowing me to do that, but what Mr. Venezia said is so true. I, I enjoy wonderful, wonderful, wonderful support, wonderful talent, and an incredible work ethic from the people that I rely very heavily on, and they are namely Patrick and Michael, but the entire administrative team. Cynthia Conant has been a wonderful addition to this district. Dan Downs is Director of Digital Learning. We have, we have fantastic staff, faculty, wonderful kids. This is, this is a terrific place to work. I look forward to coming to school every, I, I still say I go to school, 32 years into it, I go to school, I don't go to work, and it's, it's a very advantageous, advantageous position to be in, to say that you can enjoy coming in here every day, but it really is about the people, and I appreciate very much the, the sincerely strong support that I've gotten from, from this committee over the years. It, it means more than I could ever express to you, and I just want you to know how much I appreciate that, and thank you for your, your very generous feedback, and I will, I will take that all into consideration as I continue to, to move forward with, with everyone to make this district the best that it can be. Thank you.
Scott?
One, one more thing. Well, I, I just think it's worth mentioning the hours that Mr. Bernard puts in. I don't think people realize that. I mean, when I, we do policy subcommittee at 7:00 AM, he's been here for an hour and a half already, most of the time, you know, I mean, he's, he's...
Well, he leaves at around time.
No, he's here at night. He's here for school committee, he's here for school events, he's going to CPAC meetings. I mean, he, it's amazing the amount of time that he puts in. I mean, he's here early, he's here late, and it's not just once every couple of weeks when we have a school committee meeting, it's regularly, like, if I go to something at night, he's there, he's at the sports, sporting events, he's at the maskers, and so it's just, it's just amazing how much time he puts into it.
Very good point, but the beer's not getting any colder. So to that end, we negotiated, we actually talked to John tonight, we've been talking over the last few executive sessions. His contract currently expires in, at the end of fiscal, in the end of fiscal 2020. We'd like to, so that's two years, we'd like to expand his, extend his contract by a year tonight to end at the end of fiscal year 2021. Also, over the next two years, provide John with a, an increase of 3% cost of living per year, each of the next two years, and the third year, 2021, will be negotiated at a later date. Those are the, the main, the main points of his new, or his extended slash revised contract. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to extend Mr. Bernard's contract to 2021 and to revise the terms of the contract.
Now, that's June of 30th of 2021, right? That would be the date, right?
Correct.
So moved?
Motion by Scott. Second by Janine. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Revise the terms of his contract. Okay, I'm assuming we're going to really blast through the next items on the agenda here.
They can be very quick, Mr. Chairman.
We have both the SEEM collaborative FY19 budget and the North Shore Education Consortium FY19 budget, both important partners with us in our special education efforts. Mr. Bernard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there any opposition to me speaking about them collectively?
No.
Okay. So, as you know, the board, the committee appoints me, has appointed me to serve as the district's representative of the Board of Directors of both the SEEM collaborative and the North Shore Education Consortium, and as a member, I think that, one of my obligations as a, as a member is to report to you periodically on the functions of those two education collaboratives, and in part is to present you the adopted budget for each school. So that's what you have as part of your packet. The one thing I would highlight for, for the community and for the committee is that by being a member of these collaboratives and utilizing their skills, skills as, as special education collaboratives to the benefit of students that we are not able to educate in district is, we enjoy a pretty significant financial savings, too, and I would, I would tell you that we are, we are projecting savings that would be in the area of $90,000 at the SEEM collaborative, and in the area of about $25,000 savings at the North Shore Education Consortium. So I think it's an important, you know, while we don't let that override our, our decisions around educating students with special needs, it's really about what's the best program for them. It is a, you know, a byproduct that I think is not to be overlooked, that there is a financial savings as well, so.
Beneficial. Beneficial to us being part of both these organizations. Mr. Buckley?
Do you have a comment quick? No, I think, I'm going to. I can speak slowly if you like. No, I think it's, I think it's important to have the collaboratives, and in the budget, I did note that the number of students in the collaboratives has gone down this year, and I know, we brought this at the budget, budget workshop, there's more private placement, private placements and residential placements, and I do hope that with the new position that we funded now for next year, that there's a lot of effort on trying to develop programs here, maybe trying to develop programs with, potentially with the collaborators, or making suggestions to the collaboratives to try to be able to bring more students back into these programs, and maybe even find some placements that if, if there's not something at SEEM or at another collaborative, that we could maybe even educate them within our district at some point in time. So, my only comment.
Right, and I think that's one of the goals of that new elementary specialized coordinator, is to see if we can develop programs that years down the road, we can start bringing in students, tuition students, that would help our, on our cost basis. There's no action required on those, right?
There is not, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments?
I am. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Michael.
Okay, next, we have the presentation, Mr. Bernard. One of the things he has talked about and he's worked on is developing a new North Reading School District mobile app, and I'll turn it over to John to present it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just have a very, a very short video tonight to introduce to you where, where things are with the development of an app for the North Reading Public Schools, and before I, I take you through the video, there were two things I would want to mention in advance. The first is, is that what, what I'm going to show you right now is really intended to be just an illustration. It does not mean that this is actually what you're, you're going to see in totality, nor is it necessarily the, the content only that would be restricted to, to the app, but, so that's point one. Point number two is, you know, at times I, I need to recognize my own limitations, my own weaknesses, and where I need assistance, and I want to acknowledge publicly that I received significant assistance from, from a student at the high school, Michael Tyrell, who you all know, because he comes, is a member of the student representatives of the school committee. Michael is very talented in this area, and he's done an awful lot of work, both with me and for me, to get us to the point where we are soon going to be introducing the app as something that people will be able to download and utilize as a resource for information about the district, and, and Dan Downs, our Director of Digital Learning, too, has been a very good, very good resource, both for me and for Michael, when I have kind of tasked him with the kinds of things I was looking for. So this video, as you can see up on the screen, runs for a little bit over a minute, and I mean, it's, there's no, there's no audio to it, I'm just going to kind of walk you through what a user would, would experience when they, when they have the app available on their phone. So the screen that you see up there is, is intended to be a smartphone screen, and so when you clicked on the app, this is what you would find, and it would be an instruction. You could either hit the, the district website, or if you swipe to the right, you could then find all of these resources on that first swipe, and if you were to select one of those, you would get a series of pieces of information. I know the athletic schedule has long been one of those things that it was not always easy to find. You had to go through a series of clicks through myscores.com to get the athletic schedule. That's something that I think is a, is a pretty significant improvement here. What you see next is a swipe for the high school, and so right now, the content that we've identified are the teacher pages. This is, you know, to be able to access any teacher in the high school, and there are particular teacher pages that the students often find assignments on, parents can find other information about their child's classes and such, the principal's corner, you know, we've identified some resources for parents, like the student handbook, the program of studies, all of our core curriculum through the academics, again, the program of studies, and what is it there about North Reading High School that we want to, we want to highlight through the app could be found here as well. And then you're going to just see a series of swipes that would bring you to each of the five schools of the district, so here's the middle schools page, you know, right now, the Washington DC trip is of interest, so the, the information would be readily available there. The, the three elementary schools look, you know, pretty similar, and there's a demo here that you'll see for, for the athletics content, too, in just a moment. So right here, what we've loaded is, you could find the team standings, okay, so how are our teams doing in the current season? All right, so that's that one click. So you, you would just scroll it up and down. Michael did the video for me, he's demonstrating with his finger swipe. I just want to go back, that went a little bit faster than I would have liked it. Right here, so you would, you would similarly get a schedule, an up-to-date schedule, and that's, I think, important because, you know, things change, weather-dependent, cancellations, whatever it is, that schedule will be, will be updated, and it'll be very relevant for anybody that's looking to find out where our teams are playing in any of the three given seasons. So essentially, that's it. So pretty soon, we will be announcing the unveiling, and you'll be able to down, download the app with a little North Reading icon right there.
So can we ask a couple of questions?
You can.
So... Well, now that you're not here, we can ask, no. One is, I didn't say anything for lunch menus up there.
We can add content in. Again, this was just to be an illustration, but yeah, we could have, we could have the food services department could have a link.
To me, I think that, that's...
Yeah, those are the kinds of things that I need to hear, and then, and as, when we do the unveiling, too, you know, we can add things in that people are particularly interested in.
Who's going to maintain it to update all the information?
Well, it's, it's, we, we're not quite sure yet how that's going to happen. It could be, we're not sure what content will be merged with our website, so when a website is updated with any kind of information, is, is the app pulling the information directly or not?
Because I guess one of the, so for example, you have the Washington trip for the middle school. For the high school, you might have the, when the maskers, when they're doing the musical, you want to have that, but, so we have to figure out a process to make sure that that's done, right? Okay.
Yeah, I think there's, there's, there's a place for kind of those, those things that comes, come and go, like you said, like a play, you know, might be the...
Like a one-time post.
Like the program we use to purchase a ticket, you know, that, those kinds of things, and then it can come down when, when the play is over.
Have some questions?
Is there some sort of integration with Plus Portals?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's actually been improved on for the websites, too.
Okay.
The students were having trouble getting access to that in the building.
Okay.
But we think the Plus Portal, much like the teacher page feature, should be, you know, kind of a...
Because even as parents, like, it would be cool if there was just a one-click off of the app to just tie that together. That would be good.
So once you put this out, then you'll, you'll be soliciting feedback.
Yeah, much like we do with most things we do.
Okay.
What do you like, what don't you like, what do you think needs to be added in? I think, you know, provided that we're able to do that, and it's feasible to do so, I will do that.
Sure, I know you had a list of features you wanted to see on the app, could you...
I'm, I'm dying to get out of here.
Scott, Janine, anything on this?
I mean, what's the anticipated date of, of completion?
I think it's this month.
Okay.
I mean, it'll be May. Yeah, I'll go all along just to have it out by the end of the school year, and I think we'll, we'll...
It would be good to, like, if we could get some feedback right away, and perhaps...
And make that over the summer.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
A true unveiling in September, or something like that.
Right. Yeah. Okay. Great. Thank you, John. Looks good. Okay. Next, we have, I lost my agenda.
It should be done.
Minutes. Okay, I've reviewed all the minutes. I can tell you that there was, I found a mistake on one of them.
Uh-oh.
But not, so, but the first one, the budget workshop for April 4th, 2018, that looked fine to me. If anybody, unless anybody has any changes, I'll take a motion to approve.
Motion to approve open session budget workshop, April 4th, 2018. Minutes.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
One abstention.
One abstention?
That was not at that meeting.
Oh, Julie was not there, okay, so four, zero, one, abstention. Okay, next, we have executive session from April 9th, 2018.
Move to accept the executive session minutes, April 9th, 2018.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous. Okay, and the next one, I have a correction on, uh, this is the April 9th, 2018 open meeting, on the second page, um, the last comment under the budget hearing, it says Mr. Andy Schultz gave input on the future income from the new Pulte, is P-U-L-T-E? P-U-L-T-E, Pulte Homes. See, that just proves I read these, which is important.
The next set of minutes I read will be my first.
Don't say that. With that, can I have a motion to accept an amended version of the April 9th, 2018 open session minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous. Next, we have, um, the budget workshop open session from May 2nd, 2018.
Move to accept the open session budget workshop of May 2nd, 2018.
Second.
Motion is second, further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous. Okay, next, uh, we have no budget update at this time, we have no staffing update at this time, uh, we do have bids and donations, and we would not want to deprive Julie of giving us her last reading of bids and donations, so Julie?
No one wants that job next.
I, I might, I might apply for it.
I'd like to make a motion that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of $1,000 from the Compass Group to be awarded to a graduating senior of the class of 2018.
Second.
Motion is second, $4,000 from the Compass Group for a scholarship, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous.
I'd like to make a motion that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of $1,600 from the North Reading Music Boosters to cover the cost of the Maskers' performance at Six Flags New England.
All second.
Great one.
We have a motion in a second for the North Reading Music Boosters donation of $1,600, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous.
I'd like to make a motion that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude in-kind donations for enrichment activities costing $1,794.50 and teacher appreciation activities, $317.10 for a grand total of $2,111.60 from December 2017 through February 2018.
Second.
So we have a motion to accept $2,111.
Who it's from?
And 60 cents, I was going to say from the-
From the J. Turner Hood Elementary Parents Association.
Ready for the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous as usual, thank you very much to our generous groups and individuals for helping us with the school system. Okay, next, we have subcommittee updates. Athletic Subcommittee, we discussed basically the same old, same old, the, uh, the new facility, which, um, we're still getting the scheduling down, I, there was a, there was an issue this week where they were locked, should have been open, but we're, we're working on that, there's going to be a mobile application where, uh, the doors can be locked, unlocked through a mobile app, and there was some training done on that today, um, and hopefully that'll be up and running within the next few days, and we'll get the scheduling sorted out. The goal, the, the bathroom should now be open for all activities, games, not practices, games and other events at the entire athletic complex.
I know there, there was a comment on the Community Connection about, was it open one?
Yes, I have, I've dealt with that.
Who, if somebody has questions about that, who do they, who do we direct them?
Well, they're probably going to, you're probably going to get better answers from either calling the, um, the Parks and Rec Department, Marty Tilton, or calling the, or calling the school, I don't think you're going to get an answer on Facebook.
No, I know.
That's my guess.
I just didn't know who.
Right, it would be-
I mean, obviously for the-
Marty Tilton is-
-activities, it would probably be either Dave-
Dave Johnson or-
For Parks and Rec, it would be-
Right, Marty Tilton.
Marty Tilton.
Yeah.
Athletic officer of the high school.
Right.
And you've got to get it coordinated, it's going to, it'll, it'll get coordinated, I mean.
Right, there's so much going on down there, we don't want to leave it open all the time, but we want it to be open when there's any games or-
Yeah.
Or other major events going on down there. Um, the other thing we talked about, I, I did a little, um, kind of punch list of things down in the whole athletic complex area that need a little attention, and I think basically, um, whatever needs to be done is going to get done within the next few months down there in terms of maintenance and a few other things, um, they're all, they're all minor issues.
Yeah.
Yeah, nothing, nothing major.
Building itself is functioning.
Right, the building's fine. Um, also, we discussed the batting cages, which are ready, beautiful project done without any, uh, taxpayer money, $26,000, I believe, from, um, donations and gifts, um, to build, put that batting cage together for both, used for both softball and baseball.
Fit in there just perfect, right?
Right.
Baseball fields.
It looks great. Um, Jerry, that was about it, right?
Yeah, I mean, that and the fact that the revolving account, we should have a, uh, plus, we're in the black as we roll over into next fiscal year, so that's good.
Right, yep. Um, Finance Planning Team, we've met three times since our last meeting, and the result of it was the budget we approved tonight, there's basically nothing else to be said on that, um, with that subcommittee. So that's it for the reports, um, next, we have administrative report, Mr. Bernard?
Mr. Chairman, thank you, two things to highlight for you, um, I provided you some, some good news, um, both for, um, the Batch Elder School and the Hood School. Um, the Batch Elder School, um, Explorer Vision Team, um, that had been a regional winner, was selected as a first-place winner, and we will be traveling to Washington DC, um, I believe it's the weekend of June, um, 9th and 10th, and the student participants will each receive a $10,000 savings bond. Um, this is not the first time that this has happened for an Explorer Vision Team at the Batch Elder School, um, but it's quite an accomplishment. I had the pleasure of receiving an invitation to attend the, the regional award ceremony that was held at the Batch Elder School back, um, in April, um, and I have to tell you, it is unbelievable to see what third graders are doing, really, I mean, I attached for you, um, some, some correspondence that I received from one of the teachers at the Batch Elder School, Mr. Cassell, for you to see, um, the, some of the projects that the students came up with, with their parent, teacher, um, coaches, and it really, it's remarkable. So congratulations to them, I've taken the liberty to extend an invitation for them to come to the June 11th School Committee Meeting to be recognized by the committee, so I hope that, um, that's okay, but, uh, you'll have an opportunity to, um, extend, uh, personal congratulations to, to folks, um, at that meeting on June 11th.
So, John, just one quick question.
Yes.
Are they all going to Washington DC?
It's the, it's the one, if you look at the back, it's the Eye Swamp, um, project is the one that is the, it's, that's the team.
Okay.
It's, I think it's the last, um, third to the last page in the packet, um, it's in the box there on the left, Eye Swam, excuse me, Eye Swarm, the Eye Swarm team.
So they are going to DC for-
They've been invited, I can't tell you, I can't confirm that every family is able to go, but they have, that is the team that has been invited to go. Yeah, it's pretty, pretty exciting. And then the second thing is, um, Mrs. Whitney Cleary, um, who was at the meeting that the, um, when the Hood School hosted the school committee, um, she does, she's done some really wonderful work with the Makerspace Program at the, at the Hood School and was recognized, um, she was in the running for the top STEM teacher in the state of Massachusetts by the New England Patriots, uh, STEM Teacher of the Year Program, um, but she certainly has, is very proud to be one of the five top teachers named, and the school, the Hood School will receive a, uh, $1,000 check, um, to be used towards supporting STEM initiatives at the, um, at the little, at the, excuse me, at the Hood School, so congratulations to, uh, to Mrs. Cleary, not only for the work that she's done, but for having been recognized, um, it's a pretty, pretty nice thing.
Do we have her here on the 11th too, to publicly recognize her, if she's available?
I can extend an invitation if she's available.
I mean, I know she's not related to the batch thing, but that might be a nice thing to publicly recognize her at, at the school committee.
I will, I will do that tomorrow, I'll ask, uh, I'll reach out to her, she, she and I have been corresponding about her, her process, and I think she was disappointed,